We will now reconvene the regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council for Tuesday, February 15, 2022. Roll call, Madam Clerk, please. Councilmember Vega?
Here, here. There was two of them.
Councilmember Starbuck? Councilmember Cordova?
Here.
Mayor Protam Jeremy Ball?
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here.
Mr. Malavi, please let us know if there's any reportable action from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. I first want to note that Councilmember Vega did join us for the closed session after the roll call, but the city council met on the two items on the agenda and discussed those two items, but there was no reportable action.
Thank you. Please rise and join us for invocation from Pastor Nate Marsh and remain standing through the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. God, thank you for this community and thank you for the authorities and people that help keep order and peace in our community, for the firefighters, police officers, emergency workers, and caretakers. Watch over them and protect them as they place themselves in harm's way to complete their missions, give their families peace and comfort. And God, thank you for our authorities and this council in particular. Thank you for the order and law and structures that mimic you and your ways. God, give us clarity to uphold the laws and standards agreed upon, protect those efforts. And God, give us humility to see our mistakes and admit our failures, allow us a clear picture of our motives, present before our faces our self-centered desires that corrupt your ways and blessing, and convict us to turn away from these evils and to seek your mercy because your love is great. Bless the efforts here to further the prosperity of Lompoc, bless the discussions and decisions, and give direction to the best and wisest of choices. Allow this time to be fruitful. Bless those that will execute these decisions and give them wisdom on how to make these decisions happen. Give wisdom on how to use the resources you have given our community effectively and for the common good. Bless our associations, our relationships, and families. Help us to celebrate each other's victories and give joy when others reap the benefits. God, we ask for your influence and direction, for your love for us to be more pronounced and profound in our lives. Thank you for showing us your desire for our well-being and giving us peace. We trust in your continued leading and blessing. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For those of you that are not able to attend in person, we do broadcast our council meeting on Comcast Channel 23. We broadcast on our radio station, K-Peg 100.9 FM, as well as live stream from thecityoflompoc.com. Click City Council button and view City Council meetings. If you're not attending in person but wish to comment during oral communications or a specific agenda item, you may call 805-875-8201 during the public comment period and have three minutes. You may also submit comments via email prior to 4:00 p.m. on the Tuesdays of our council meeting to shaddon@ci.lompoc.ca.us. All right, our first presentation this evening is from the Lompoc Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Bureau, and Ms. Davika Stalling.
Good evening, Mayor Osborne and councilmembers. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Davika Stalling, and I am the CEO of the Lompoc Chamber, and I will be giving a report on the reporting period of July through December of 2021. First, I'm going to start with the boring stuff, which is the analytics that we're required to report on. And so, in the first slide, you'll see the economic development and business services. So, these are numbers reported by the city of Lompoc, and we had approximately 103 new businesses within that reporting time. There are no current tracking procedures in place for new business openings or closures, so we don't have a way to track that. And then our visitor traffic information. Number of walk-ins were down due to COVID. We've limited our walk-in availability, but those numbers are 113. Number of calls is 600, averaging five calls per day to the chamber office. Our visitor and relocation packets that were distributed, we have 15 visitor packets mailed at the direct request of potential visitors, 320 mailed as a result of the California Road Trip ads, and 250 relocation packets were distributed to Vandenberg Space Force Base, and five mailed to potential visitors. Thirteen information requests sent via email at direct request of potential visitors. And then our website analytics. I won't go through each one, but these are our top five. So, page visits from top five countries, the top five page visits from our lompoc.com website, as well as our top five downloads. Additional website analytics are numbers of hits per month with a total of 357,107 for the reporting period of July through December. And then the individual numbers for the unique visitors, which totaled 25,109. And then our social media. So, we recorded our page reaches through Facebook, either through likes or shares on posts that we post. Total number of followers on Facebook is 2,940. Instagram per month, and the number of followers is 1,838. Now the fun stuff. So, our community events that were held through reporting period of July through December, with our first in-person event, which was our annual banquet, which was held in August. This year, we took a different avenue to recognize different industry sectors within our community that went above and beyond the call of duty during COVID. So, we recognized small business. The reward recipient for that was Kim Lee. For education, Bree Valla Healthcare was the Lompoc Valley Medical Vaccination Team, and retail was Alex and Aaron Crocker, nonprofit Shelby Wild of Route One, and Jamie Diggs of Santa Barbara County Food Bank. Next event that we held was our Military Affairs Committee. They held our annual Vandenberg Space Force Military Appreciation BBQ, in which we served an upward of 250 airmen, and we do that event annually. Then on to a couple of fun events, our scarecrow competition, which was held in October through the weeks of the 11th through the 31st, and then our Old Town Trick or Treat, which was held on October 30. So, for economic development, we partnered with Santa Barbara Foundation and held a grant assistance workshop for small businesses, which was through the Santa Barbara Foundation, and it was an emergency business assistant grant. And I was just notified last week that four of the small businesses actually received funding, so that was great news for us. And those workshops are very helpful because they have an employee come down and sit with people to walk them through the entire process. In addition to that, we also collaborated with Economic Development Collaborative and held a small business luncheon, and where over 15 small businesses receive supportive services as well. And then, on November 30, we partnered with the Lompoc Rex Department and held a countywide job fair, in which an upward of 200-plus job seekers attended and over 40 companies were registered. Within that reporting time, we held two ribbon cuttings. One was for Family Service Agency welcoming their new Your Place programming, as well as CASA. Then, on November 27, we held our Annual Small Business Saturday and had over 20-plus businesses participate in that as well. Then in December, we ended the year with another support to Vandenberg Space Force Base, in which we sponsored a Friends of the Family Christmas event. This was a new event for us, as well as for Vandenberg Space Force, and it was put on to really facilitate a Christmas-like atmosphere for children with special needs and children that have deployed parents. Through the reporting months of July through December, we acquired 16 brand-new chamber members, which I'm really excited about because the numbers just keep growing, so yay for that. And as part of our contract, we have taken over economic development. Coming on in June, we did not have a committee formed, so we kind of hit the ground running to form a committee. And so, currently, our committee consists of the following: Sharon Hedman from Vandenberg Space Force Base, Luis Castaneda, local business owner and community member, Mike Seewell, business owner, community member, Tim Harrington, business owner, community member, and Shelby Carpenter from Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce and community member. And at this point, I am going to turn it over to committee member Luis Castaneda.
Hi, council. Hi, everyone. My name is Luis Castaneda. I'm a local resident and business owner. Wanted to give you guys a brief overview of what the Economic Development Committee has in store and how we want to just help Lompoc out. So, I'll start with our mission statement. So, as a committee of volunteers, we aim to promote and encourage proactive development by partnering with businesses, industries, and community residents to expand the quality of life, to retain the diverse fabric of the Lompoc Valley. And all that means is, we're really going to reach out to just about anyone that's willing to work with us and see what we can offer Lompoc, what we can collaborate with, and what we can do to make this an overall better community, not just for ourselves, our business owners, but also our children. So, the overall vision is to help attract, retain, and expand businesses to increase and diversify the city's economic growth. We will pinpoint changing economic trends and develop recommendations to our city officials while we collaborate and maximize interest in the Lompoc Valley. Committee goals. We chose three topics or three different things, just for lack of better words, but we want to focus on economic growth, youth-focused support and attractions for our kids, and citywide beautification. So, starting with economic growth, we want to continue working with retail strategies to promote retail chain businesses. We want to offer different services to our existing businesses, but we also want to offer opportunity to new businesses. We want to connect potential businesses coming in looking for space in Lompoc to property owners. That way, they can start looking for leases, getting some buildings, and opening up new businesses. Allen Hancock College, we want to work with them to see what programs we can bring into Lompoc to help give some of our students and residents different opportunities for career paths. When we talk about youth-focused support and attraction for them, we want to give them something to do, whether it may be bowling alleys, just different activities for them to be able to go out, be kids, experience life in a safe environment. We want to collaborate with the community members, local business owners, CBOs, to create scholarship opportunities for our youth. So, citywide beautification, we want to work with different organizations, nonprofits, local business owners, churches, to just help clean up our city. We have a lot to offer. There's a lot of beauty in Lompoc, and unfortunately, sometimes it kind of gets pushed back because of the negativity around. Definitely a beautiful community, beautiful people here, and we just want to highlight that. We have our city drive-in restoration. We're starting to reach out and see if we can work on something and clean that up. That's a landmark in our community. Everybody knows about it. Everybody sees it when you drive in, so how beautiful would it be if we were able to kind of spice that up, give that sign life again? Thank you very much. That is all. Appreciate it.
So, that concludes our presentation. I also just wanted to highlight some upcoming events. So, March 17, we have State of Vandenberg Air Force Base, Space Force Base, I have to get in the habit of saying the name change. And then in April, we will have our State of the City. We are also preparing to relaunch and bring back Old Town Market, so we're really excited about that. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Any questions? Councilmember Vega?
I do have one. One of the goals, and thank you so much for the presentation, the goals are great. To see the mission statement asks actually a direction. Possibly with the beautification part of it and cleanup, maybe the chamber could assist some of the committees, such as beautification, and maybe enhancing or finding people to join. They've had difficulty lately with getting quorums and stuff, so maybe is that one of your goals? Maybe you could find someone that might want to participate in that group also. If you could, that would be great. I know that's kind of disappointing to come to a meeting and you can't, or have a meeting canceled for quorums. We all know that, you know, lack of a quorum. So, thank you so much. Very, very nice presentation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ball?
I just wanted to say thank you for such a great presentation. This is your first time doing that up here, so I can imagine being a little bit nervous, but you nailed it. I just wanted to give a shout out, because I did, I'm a member of the chamber, and I attended that workshop luncheon, and it was, you know, a handful of people, 10 or 15 people, but the information that was shared and the professionalism from those folks that you brought in, and to see a few people around the table, their faces light up at realizing there were opportunities to potentially save their business, expand their business, et cetera. I thought that was very thoughtful and well-done. Small Business Saturday, I stayed in my district. We went around downtown, and it was, there was tons of people. It was really great to see people out shopping local, so thanks for pushing that. It's also great to see some new faces at the chamber, both in membership and in leadership. I'm excited to have younger people get involved and start to change the potential outcome of Lompoc. So, anyway, just congratulations. I was going to ask you about this summer with the market on South 8th Street. It sounds like you're going to be bringing that back. Is any more information that you can share about that, or is it more to be determined?
More to be determined. I'm realizing myself that a lot goes into planning that, and since the chamber is now a staff of two, our workload is very heavy. We have started early than they normally do, just to make sure we check all boxes and get everything in place, but I'm really excited. So far, we've gotten really great feedback from people that are wanting to be a part of it, so good things to come.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much. I know that every time that I've personally gone or heard from many people that just so look forward to that event, and we're very excited to have that back. Thank you.
You too. I am too.
Councilmember Cordova?
I just want to say thank you for all the work that you do, supporting businesses, taking on, I think, the huge task of trying to revive a lot of what somewhat the pandemic caused, but also prior issues that we had. And I really give you guys a lot of credit for that, and also facilitating throughout our community activities for our families. It's a lot to do, like you said, on a staff of two, but I just want to say thank you, and I really, truly appreciate the work that the chamber does and what each one of you guys, especially to see the Economic Development Committee come back. And I come from Economic Development Committee, so I'm very proud to see that coming back.
Well, thank you very much.
I have one more question.
Councilmember Vega?
As being appointed as liaison to the chamber, it would be really important to me if I could receive an email or something, put me on the list. I know there was a transition between Amber and you guys, and I think it got lost in the shuffle, so I don't want to be accused of not wanting to go, okay, or being a part of it. So, pretty simple. Thank you.
Are you referring to the board meetings?
To whatever events you guys have or board meetings. I'd like to be informed, so I can be a good liaison to the council through the chamber, okay?
Do you receive our Friday Focus emails? I can get your email and sign you up for that.
No problem.
All right, thank you.
Seeing no other questions? Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is our city manager report. Mr. Albert?
Good evening. Thank you. Just wanted to let everybody know, finding this is pretty exciting news, that the universal mask mandate will no longer be enforced, so there still are some conditions, as of tomorrow, I should say. There still are some conditions, so be aware of that. Next thing I'd like to do is play a video that Samantha Scroggins did for us, our public information officer. She did it with the Recreation Division for Recruitment for the Aquatic Center. So, without further ado...
I was coming here to swim quite a lot because I surf here locally, and I worked, retired from UPS after about 25 and a half years. Swimming's real handy on keeping you in shape for surfing, and I've always kind of enjoyed being around the water. And so, I kind of feel at home here, and you meet a lot of people, a lot of the public, a lot of nice people. I feel from my time working here, it definitely helped me be more of a social person. This isn't a quiet job, especially during rec swim. You have to use your voice, and you have to be vigilant, and when something's going on, you have to speak out.
There's multiple jobs here, such as a clerk, if you want to be a clerk, or a lifeguard, or even a WSI, water safety instructor, and a head guard as you slowly want to move up.
One of the benefits of working here is it helps you get your foot in the door because it's a city job, so that would make the hiring process much easier for you if you find any other city-related jobs that you're interested in.
So, I was born and raised in Lompoc, and throughout high school, I played water polo, so I was around the pool a lot and at the aquatic center a lot, and it made sense to me to make that transition, and it allowed me to have a flexible schedule and go to school while working at the same time. And I got to work with a lot of my friends at the same time and learn skills that have set me up for my foundation with the Lompoc Fire Department.
So, another benefit of working here is it works with your schedule. It starts your retirement.
So, I would say the pros of working here is a flexible schedule that fits my hours, as well as building a strong community between both the patrons here and the workers that you have.
For a first job, it's an excellent first job. A lot of responsibility. You learn a lot. But for an older person, there's still plenty of challenges and plenty of rewards.
I do feel that working in this position in particular, as a lifeguard, it helps us a lot better connect with the people here. Whenever people need help, we're always in the position to do so, and it can vary to anything with first aid, or just talking to them, or any questions regarding the pool.
So, during my time at the Aquatic Center, I had the opportunity to meet a lot of people, and a lot of people at the fire department that I currently work with were former lifeguards, and so they talked to me and taught me about the fire service and what I could expect, and ended up doing ride-alongs with them. And I really liked the CPR and the first aid portion of lifeguarding, and I wanted to learn more and see what else I could do with that, and that's what led me to go into my EMT Academy, learning to be an EMT, working on an ambulance, and then eventually transitioning to the fire department, where I continue to use those skills today.
A lot of good people here, good coworkers, the camaraderie's strong.
And you take the class to become a guard, and you become a guard here as opposed to another pool or facility. Then you get to be reimbursed on the class fees, and of course, you get to swim for free.
Be part of our lifeguard team. Join us at the Lompoc Aquatic Center. Learn more at www.cityoflompoc.com/recreation. 805-875-8100.
I just wanted to share with you. I thought Samantha did a great job. Get you motivated. I just want to remind everybody, you know, the city has 387 full-time positions, you know. I encourage you to go to the HR employment opportunities and be a part of what I think is the best place to work. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any questions for the city manager? Councilmember Cordova?
Dean, I just want to say thank you for sharing that information, because I think a lot of people don't realize all the possibilities there are to employment with the city, and thank you for our Public Relations Officer Samantha for making that video. In an age where I think people are more driven towards video and imagery, I think having content like that is great to motivate and inspire people to look for or seek employment with the city of Lompoc, as well as, I kind of call it a little bit of pride of ownership. It really reflects, we're hearing it from our staff, from our employees, and that is inspirational, so I really thank you guys for doing that.
And I also want to thank all our lifeguards. I know that they aren't necessarily always comfortable on TV and talking about themselves, so getting in front of a camera and speaking to their passion and their experience is really helpful, and I want to say, make sure they're aware we thank them for that. And again, it is a great entry into what it's like to work for the city and opportunities, as you see, for young and old, so I'm really glad to see that we have such a diverse employment at the pool. It really makes a reflection of what our community is, so thank them all for that. If they aren't watching tonight, make sure Dean and Samantha that they get that feedback from us. All right, thanks so much. We will do public comment on consent calendar next. You have three minutes to speak on consent calendar items. The number to call is 805-875-8201. 805-875-8201. Madam Clerk, did we have any written comments on consent calendar? No, ma'am, nothing. While we wait to see if there's a call, I'll read the procedure. All items listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one call and no one rise, we will close oral communication on consent calendar and bring it back to council. Is there an item that would like to be pulled or have any questions before we take a motion? Councilmember Starbuck?
Just a quick question. On the finance on this here, when you go into the actual attachments, public pension status, et cetera, this does not refer to the refinancing of our PERS debt. This was all pre-refinance, correct?
That's correct.
So, our reply in the grand jury does not reflect any of the refinancing of our debt?
It does.
It's in there. It talks about how we re-amortized it from a 15, from a 30-year to a 15-year amortization.
Okay, I missed that little section, and thank you.
Yeah, the response does state that we did re-amortize it and set ourselves up for better success, and does point out that CalPERS is still the issue, but we're trying to address it. Councilmember Ball?
So, I was going to pull an item, but I think if you would allow just a few clarifying questions, that might save us a little bit of time. Item number two on consent calendar, is that where we're at?
Item two, the approval of response to the 2021 Santa Barbara County Grand Jury Report, Lompoc Police Department's Moving Towards a Safe and Proud Community?
Yes.
All right. I see Chief Mariani is here. I'm assuming your questions would be for him?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty. And as long as we don't veer into major discussion, we can get a few clarifying questions answered. Floor is yours, Councilmember Ball.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
I won't keep you too long. I just, now, I understand this is in consent calendar, and we usually go through the motion and get past a lot of these things, but this is something very specific, dealing with public safety, the future of our community, you know, approaches that we might take. Would you mind giving us a quick synopsis of your feelings about this item?
So, the grand jury does this on a yearly basis, and they changed the calendar, so we got the report in December. And this year, they addressed two areas that they wanted us to respond to, and that was based upon their investigation, their interviews of department personnel, as well as members of the community, and I believe also the up a clinician with a deputy, and they handle mental health calls, which we know oftentimes are a significant call load for police departments. It also impacts or has a lot to do with the homeless population. So, over the past year, I believe the county responded to some 1,600 calls with this team, and that resulted in only 11 arrests. And my understanding is that they also were able to get people into treatment resources as well as reconnect, so it's been very valuable to them. Following suit, or following that example, Santa Barbara also implemented a co-response team. They team a clinician along with a police officer who's going out and dealing with these calls. And then most recently, the Santa Maria Police Department also followed suit and is implementing a team with a clinician and a police officer. I am very encouraged by this, and my response is that I agree that we need a like team. I would like to do a further analysis, and one of the things that the grand jury recommended is that we pursue and make a request to the county board of supervisors to see about getting funding through the county mental health department to provide a clinician. And what I want to do is bring back a staff report where I will address the viability of that, with the costs associated with that, and so that the council can evaluate and make a decision regarding that. I know that the city manager and I have been discussing this since he took over in addressing the homeless issue within the city, and we're looking at any possible solution to really make a difference, to address this long overdue challenge that we haven't been able to appropriately address. And hopefully, we can do that in a really combined effort, teaming up with other resources.
Awesome.
It's a great start.
Thank you for that. With what exists right now in terms of behavioral wealth, or, you know, things happening in Santa Barbara and Santa Maria, are we getting any of those efforts, or are they helping us in any way yet?
Well, the Sheriff's Department has extended to help us on, based upon their availability, and they've come out several times, usually during the week, but as we know, these issues come up throughout a 24-hour period, so there's a dire need for that. There's also a nonprofit organization that's been pretty active in the city for the last few months, and in one of my recent meetings with C4, we discussed that organization and the contributions that they're making. The feedback I'm getting from my personnel is that they've reached out to this organization on several instances. They've responded, they've provided assistance, in some instances, they've been able to connect people with their families or get them some services, so, you know, it's a good start, but there's a lot more to be done.
Sure. From your estimation, is it a given that we have a full-time problem, that we could definitely benefit from some sort of approach?
Absolutely. You know, there was some other interest in some other programs, too, that we've talked about over the last year and a half, and we provided data to a consultant, and, you know, I was just going over the data today, and we provided well over 1,500 calls that we addressed during a given year. They took up substantial amount of time, and sometimes, some of these calls involve the repeated or same person, so, you know, we really need to have a really holistic, combined approach to deal with this, and it's a concern for all of us, you know. I'm encouraged by some of the things that I think are happening in the city. I'm optimistic about our future, and now that Department Two is also getting closer to being fully staffed, you know, there's some good opportunities that await us for us to make a change here.
Thank you. I just wanted to, for the community, to hear a little bit more in-depth about some of those details. I look forward to you over the next few months coming back with some more specifics on how we, as a council, might approach this, and I hope the county's listening. This is an issue that we cannot address alone, unless they are putting their money where their mouth is and helping us address these things, then we'll continue to lag. So, I am encouraged that we can create collaborative relationships, and I appreciate your efforts in that way as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ball.
Councilmember Cordova.
Chief, on that same item, I just want to say that three years ago or so, when I sat on council, the first thing I asked one of the members of your staff was, what could we do to make your guys' job a lot easier? And that's exactly what they asked for, that was Lieutenant Arias that I sat with. And so, to know that other cities have recently adopted that and have done that, I am looking forward to your report coming back to the council, because I think Lompoc always has a forward-thinking of what we need to do. Sometimes our funding is not there, and we're, you know, it's prohibited because of our financial situation sometimes, but I'm with you, that I'm very hopeful, and I see a lot of light at the end of the tunnel, so I'm very excited. I did read the report, it's very hard to swallow, but I think there's a lot of room for us to be able to work together and get something done, and in the best interest of the community members, the business members, as well as our police department and their well-being as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Cordova.
Councilmember Ball.
One quick thing I forgot to mention is just for everyone out there in the community, this is a grand jury report, it's about seven or eight pages, but it does give a ton of detail, where we've been, what happened, all of those things. If you're interested in that, and, you know, please educate yourself, go to the city's website, you can find the agenda under City Council. This is item number two on tonight's agenda, and again, at least you can know where we're at and where we're trying to head in the right direction. It's worth checking out.
All right. Thank you very much, chief, for answering those questions. If there are no more questions, I'll entertain a motion for consent calendar. Councilmember Vega?
I'll make the motion that we accept consent calendar.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And Councilmember Ball seconds that. And since we already asked questions, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right, we will move on to oral communications. These are for items regarding city matters that are not on the agenda, but if you can't stay for agenda items, you may speak to it at this point. You have three minutes. You may call in at 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201.
Deb Andrews, Lompoc. I'm speaking in response to, again, the promotion of COVID-19 vaccination at the last council meeting from this dais. Reports from the Center for Disease Control reveal the COVID-19 vaccines kill far more children than the virus itself. The death rate among 10- to 14-age group is 52 times higher in the vaccinated than those children who did not get the vaccine. Those that mask, test, or inject are personally accountable and liable for their actions. All those involved in perpetrating, facilitating, and promoting these crimes are complicit. Regard for human rights is the foundation of freedom. All humans are born free and have the right to life, liberty, and security of person. I have some time left. I would like to add to the wonderful prayer that we had this evening. Dear Lord, strengthen us with your grace in our epic battle to return this great nation to the light, as our founders intended, a republic created for an educated, moral people. Here are prayers for strength and the stamina to bear the burden and meet the challenges we face as we return government and our justice system to the Constitution. God bless America. Amen.
Madam Clerk, did we have any written communications? No, ma'am, nothing. Thank you.
Nick, Nick Lenko, resident of Lompoc. So, the grand jury report is, you know, talking about a safe and proud community. Are we really a safe community when people out walking their dogs before they go to bed are targets to be shot? When they have to worry about suspicious vehicles in their neighborhoods, driving slowly, stopping in front of the driveway to their complexes, and then hearing gunshots a couple minutes later? Are we really a safe community? What is being done to make our citizens feel safer? What is being done about the rampant violence in our community? We face more than one epidemic in town. We face an epidemic of drugs, of gang activity, of virus, of sickness. Something needs to be done in our community to get the crime under control. Our officers need more training. I listen to scanners at night sometimes, and I hear the Sheriff's Department responding to calls of people who want suicide by cops. Guess what? It's a peaceful negotiation that doesn't last hours. That's what I've heard. What's Sheriff's, what's Sheriff's Department doing differently than Lompoc when it comes to, when it comes to hostile situations? Thank you very much.
Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council Chamber. You have three minutes to give your public comment. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Terry Doutney, and I want to thank city council members for serving our community. I also want to thank you for the mask mandates that you have upheld. I am sorry to hear that they are being removed because the virus is still deadly, but I wanted to thank you for all the lives you saved by requiring masks these past several months and years. Thank you for your service, thank you for caring about Lompoc. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no additional in-room and no additional calls, we will close oral communications and bring it back to the agenda. Item number seven is the public hearing to consider Measure A five-year local programs of projects for fiscal year 2023 through 2027 and adopt resolution number 6475, parentheses, 22. And we have our Assistant Public Works Director, City Engineer Greg Dearling, to make the presentation.
Let's dive into the road fund discussion, so we can approve a program of projects and get our Measure A funding next year. So, this is an overview of the city's road maintenance revenue, showing Measure A being almost half of the city's road maintenance revenue, so Measure A is a very important source for us. It's the Santa Barbara County local half-cent sales tax that goes to transportation. This is an overview of basically the two categories of expenditure for road funds, being operations or keeping things working, safe and serviceable, and capital projects extending useful life. So, within operations, there's a lot of subtasks, pavement patching, and keeping the trees safe, and cleaning drainage channels, and so on, and most of our capital expenditures for roads involve pavement rehabilitation. Photo of operations here, they continually work to keep the streets safe and usable, but they don't always add useful life. Capital projects, by contrast, add useful life, but since they're expensive, they are limited in their timing, location, and contract scope. And a complete street program has both capital and operations. For a number of years, our road needs have exceeded revenues, and because of that, we've reduced both operations and capital projects. So, without operations, our daily immediate needs, like filling potholes or trimming trees and so on, can't be met, and without capital projects, the condition of street infrastructure, particularly the pavement, continues to decline. So, where we are this year, last year, we were at 55 at this presentation, this year at 52, and that's because we do our pavement projects every other year, and we didn't do one last fall. So, we're ramping up for paving this summer. We expect the number to go back up to 55 or 56, and then probably drop again the next year if we don't do a project, so kind of bounce between these numbers. 70 is the average PCI that we, that is kind of the industry accepted standard, so being at 52 is a little ways below. This next slide shows past expenditures, and there is a strong relationship between cost-effective expenditure and the pavement condition, so it's shown a little more clearly in the more recent years. Some of those prior years were by necessity, mill-and-fill-type overlays for safety reasons that were a little less cost-effective. But in these recent years, you can see, like in 2020, we did a large cost-effective project, and we noticed a PCI improvement, so we're looking ahead to that next, well, later this year. So, here's a look ahead for the next 10 years of a number of scenarios. We're basically following the green scenario right now. We have, we have the road budget to spend about $2 million per year currently on capital projects, and we're using cost-effective measures, so that's currently holding us steady. If we spent an additional million in that same approach, we could gain some ground, possibly get up close to 70 after about 10 years. Here's just some photos of what different PCI levels look like, same as some previous presentations. And basically, the nutshell of PCIs that it reports pavement distress, severity, and prevalence, so how severe the distress is and how prevalent or widespread it is. As you can see in the better photo on the top left, there's not much distress, it's not severe, and it's also not prevalent, and the bottom right photo, it is very severe and all over the place. So, this photo tries to show our different road categories, so four categories, arterials, collectors, residential or local, and alleys, and trying to include some photos of the top two this year, just to picture a little more of what they're like and why they're important. So, the top photo, Central Avenue, looking west at H Street, showing that arterials are our streets with the highest speeds, highest traffic volumes, and they are the largest safety concern, and because they have high-traffic volumes, including truck traffic, they also deteriorate the most rapidly. So, they've been our highest priority for the limited revenue we have. Currently, our arterial system has an average PCI of 75. Collector's next on the list, that's a photo of Pine Avenue looking west at H Street. So, they're not quite as big or don't quite, don't have quite the traffic volume of arterials, but they still, they're more than local or residential streets, so relatively higher speeds, relatively higher volumes, and also deteriorate more rapidly than the average street, so they've been the second highest priority. And we have residenials or locals, which make up a little more than half of our network. The current average PCI for those is 46, so that's basically driving our overall PCI. And then alleys at the bottom. So they've been our highest priority for the limited revenue we have. Currently, our arterial system has an average PCI of 75. Collector's next on the list. That's a photo of Pine Avenue looking west at H Street. So they're not quite as big or don't quite, don't have quite the traffic volume of arterials, but they still, they're more than local or residential streets. So relatively higher speeds, relatively higher volumes, and also deteriorate more rapidly than the average street. So they've been the second-highest priority. And we have residenials or locals, which make up a little more than half of our network. The current average PCI for those is 46. So that's basically driving our overall PCI. And then alleys at the bottom. Alleys have the lowest speeds, lowest traffic volumes. Their average PCI is 30, but they don't have a lot of area in our network. So they only make up about 12.7% of our pavement area. So we use cost-effective strategies, like mentioned. And we are trying to treat as much of the, as much of our network as possible to keep it holding steady or not declining. Those cost-effective measures stay, save material, labor, transportation costs, and they prolong the useful life of the pavement. But they're generally less smooth riding, less aesthetically appealing, and they don't always provide complete repairs as rapidly or within a single operation when compared with a more robust conventional pavement rehab, like grind it all off and repaint it with a thick overlay. The bottom point on this slide is that repeated heavy vehicle loads are the leading factor in pavement deterioration. So just to summarize our cost-effective strategies and operations, we continually try to improve efficiency, and we have also dramatically reduced operational staff positions. And then in capital projects, we use a number of cost-effective treatments, and we sequence them to maximize the benefit of those as well as scheduling them every other year to get as good of unit prices as we can within a budget cycle. Here's a photo of a cost-effective project from a few years ago that provided lasting pavement improvement. And then this is similar to the message in one of the tables in the staff report, that operations require most, about $4 million per year of the city's road revenues just to keep the streets and the trees and the drainage courses safe and usable. So we have $2 million or maybe a little more left over for capital projects, which extend useful life. And currently, at that expenditure level, we expect to hold steady for at least a few years on our average PCI. So here are the tables from the staff report, showing revenue on the top and needs for expenditure on the bottom. The yellow rows on the bottom show funded needs for pavement, and the row just below those yellow rows showing 4.7 million, 8 million, and then 4 million are unfunded needs when considering standard or usual approaches to pavement maintenance. Then there's a few other needs further down the bottom, other street-related projects, like adjustments to traffic signals or improvements to street drainage, things like that. So getting into the program of projects spreadsheet, that's an attachment to the staff report. The first thing the program of projects has to do is report on past expenditures for the most recently completed fiscal year. So those are shown here. Three expenditure categories at the top for operations and one for the paving project that we did during that fiscal year at about 1.8 million. And then the bottom, the 434 was primarily the curb ramp upgrades and concrete work that was required as a result of that paving project. This is the other main part of the program of projects spreadsheet, showing revenues on the very top and expenditures on the bottom. And generally showing most of the, most of the non-operational expenditures are generally in that overlays and rehab row, showing $2.5 million every other year. The last component of the program of projects spreadsheet is, shows our, how we're doing, meeting our requirement to spend 15% of what we receive on alternative transportation, which we're on track doing. And so if we continue on that track, we'll meet our 15% goal. So overall, the city needs to adopt the program of projects in order to receive funding for the coming fiscal year for operations and for capital road uses. So the staff recommendation is to hold the public hearing, take public input, and then adopt the program of projects or provide alternate direction.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Mr. Dearling, just a couple of questions. Here on the street revenue and needs slide that you had on here, we have a city discretionary right-of-way maintenance fund. Is that also our enterprise reimbursement? Is that another word for enterprise reimbursement?
Yeah, it's the road part of that, correct.
Are we withholding money currently on that? Or are we actually spending that money?
All the money from the cost reimbursement goes to that right-of-way maintenance from the utilities, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, so.
Are we reutilizing?
Basically about $750,000 a year.
I think we have a little bit in reserve still. We could probably bump that up a little bit.
I mean, there was a discussion before on the legalities of this. So I mean, we are at least showing it here.
Yeah, that's why we changed that and moved that money into that right-of-way maintenance fund so we could utilize that for mainly alleys, repairs, and anywhere the trucks are damaging our streets.
Next question here is Measure A program of projects. It seems like every year we receive this report or an update, and we continually fall behind. You know, it's, okay, we can't produce enough gas tax with Measure A to keep our streets at the current level. They're in a slow decline. We just don't have the money. Asphalt outpaces revenue, it appears. I, I think one of the things that's important, and I don't really grasp all this, and I know it was voted on. We can't change it. But these programs of Measure A, you, you look here on bicycles and pedestrian and alternative transportation. We're, we're spending over $2 million a year on these. What projects are we doing at $2 million a year for pedestrians and bike pathways here?
That's over the five-year period. So that requirement is measured over each five-year increment of the 30-year Measure A program. So in, just to go to that slide, let's see.
It's kind of hard for me to see on this little thing here.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm just doing rounded numbers here.
Yeah, I hope, I hope the screen's more clear. So this is from fiscal year 2021 through 2425. In that five-year increment, we, a couple of those years, well, we're, we're in the second year, I guess, right now. So we, we know what we got the first year. We have an idea of what we're getting the second year, and we're estimating what we'll get the last three years. So we estimate we will need to spend $2.2 million on alternative transportation in that five-year period because of this 15% requirement. And most of what we usually do to meet that requirement is, we also have a different requirement from the feds that says any time you pretty much do anything to add thickness to your road, like anything more than a slurry seal, you have to upgrade curb ramps to ADA, current ADA standards. So usually, we do a, a concrete project because all of our paving projects trigger that requirement, and we pay for the concrete project out of that money so that we meet both requirements using the same, using this funding source. So we kind of kill two birds with one stone.
And obviously, there's no way we can divert money from a pedestrian path or a bike route somewhere to the streets themselves. I mean, we are mandated by Measure A to use this money for.
Right, yeah.
This then. It just seems kind of funny that, you know, they're looking at alternative transportation, buses and colt and all of that. And it's just stated that the heavier the vehicle, the quicker the demise of the street. And here we are promoting the destruction of streets with buses with money we don't have to fix them. So, thank you, Greg.
Councilmember Ball.
So in your presentation, and I don't mean to overly simplify it, but you kind of broke it into two categories. You talked about, you know, there being reduced operations and capital. So I want to talk about reduced operations. And you did mention up there, holding vacant positions, et cetera. Can you educate me a little bit? What should we, as a council, maybe consider focusing first? Because if we just fund a bunch of positions and get that fully staffed up, that we don't have the funds to actually do the work, kind of in a catch-22. So can you describe to me the, the state of our, this department, the vacancies, the impact upon that, just a little bit to edify me?
Sure. We, so we have kept as many positions budgeted, so included in the approved budget, as we believe are necessary going forward. But in this, in the last budget, we did eliminate, I think, four from the street maintenance division that were, historically, it had more positions. So, so at the moment, it, we, we have those positions budgeted. And if we had more revenue to spend between the two, between operations and capital, we'd, we'd fill the, the necessary operational positions, most of which are currently filled, although we've got a couple people ready to retire. And for the most part, we'd spend the extra money on capital now, which would improve our PCI.
Thank you. It's very helpful. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any more questions for staff before we go to public comment? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Dearling. And stand by in case there's additional questions after public comment. Public comment is now open on item number seven. If you would like to call in, the number to call is 805-875-8201. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communication on item seven?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. We have a typical 30-second delay with information that goes out over the radio and the television and streaming. So we just need to give a little time to make sure that anyone who'd like to call in gets a chance to do so before we close public comment on this item. So if you're just wanting to come to the microphone and say something about streets, you're more than welcome to, if there's anybody in room.
Good evening. You're live in the Long Polk City Council Chamber. You have three minutes to give public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just kind of off the cuff, I was just wondering about Measure A and listening to the reports on the PCI and usage and the areas of concern. And then listening to Councilman Jeremy Ball asking about, you know, what, basically, what should be, what, what should we consider first with the funds that we have? And it sounded like that the areas of concern were up in A and Central. Just correcting some wrong. But what, also, I was just wondering what the plans are about the entrance from the beginning of town, like Highway 1, the 246 there, and Ocean Avenue or the 246. And especially the bridge there over, over the San Ynez River, which what I would consider would could be a, a great landmark aesthetically if that was to be redone. I don't know when the last time that was looked at. I think the bridge was built in like the early 1930s or something. I don't know, maybe even before that. But, yeah, I don't know if that's Caltrans or, or what. But Ocean Avenue is desperately, desperately in need of repair. I mean, you rumble down that thing, and half of it's done and half of it's not. And then you rumble into town, and also, you, you come to stop at the intersection there, and Old Town kind of looks like it's depressed and, and out of date. But anyway, just wondering also if there's concern there in the beginning of town on Ocean Avenue and the 246 there and the bridge at the beginning of town. Also, just want to say I appreciate everything you guys do and that Long Polk's slowly moving in the right direction, and I'm excited for it. And I hope everybody has a good rest of the evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's great that we have funding to fix our streets. What about bike lanes in our community? We have bicyclists competing with pedestrians on city sidewalks because there's nowhere for ri, nowhere for them to ride in the streets where they're supposed to be riding. Now, I don't blame them for riding on sidewalks because they're trying to be safe, but it impedes pedestrian traffic. So our main streets, H Street and Ocean Avenue and Central Avenue, need accessible bike lanes because otherwise it's a traffic hazard. It's, it's a pedestrian hazard. It's, casualties can happen when there's not appropriate lanes for pedestrians, for cars, for bicycles. And if we're trying to entice people to ride their cars less, great. Let's make it accessible for bicycles in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else rise and no one else call, we'll close public comment on the item number seven. For clarity, for those of you who may not have been around to hear our prior discussions, Robinson Bridge on the south end of town is actually outside the city lambs, and it is Caltrans responsibility. SB CAG is working on getting that accelerated. They are beginning the study to assess making those changes and hope to have a project in place beginning in 2028. But we are constantly working towards identifying additional funds and hoping to accelerate that program. For those of you concerned about H Street and Ocean Street, those are also under Caltrans. We are Highway 1 through town, and that is the state's responsibility. So unfortunately, in order to make those changes, we would need to take on the financial responsibility of those streets. And as you can see, we have a difficult enough time trying to find and identify resources for the streets that we are responsible for anyway. So again, working with Caltrans is our number-one priority to try and get them to pay attention to Ocean and H Street. But complaints from you, our residents, directly to Caltrans, is always helpful. So please go to their website and let them know that District 5, City of Long Polk, H Street, Ocean are problems. And we would love to have bike lanes on them and not force people up onto sidewalks. But we need the state to recognize that. Okay, we'll bring this back to council for discussion or motion. Any questions or motion? Councilmember Starbuck.
I go ahead and move that we adopt Resolution 6475, parentheses 22.
I'll second.
And Councilmember, you can second that. Any questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Our next item is item eight. It's the introduction of ordinance number 1689, parentheses 22, repealing chapters 5.2, 5.24, 5.28 of the Long Polk Municipal Code, which currently requires a police department permit to operate any dance hall, dance academy, or skating rink. And our city attorney, Mr. Malave, is here to present us with the information and why we should repeal this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. There was a council request for my office, the city attorney's office, to review the municipal code and determine if there are any sections of our code or chapters that may be outdated or unnecessary or that the city does not enforce at this time. And after talking with, well, after reviewing the code and talking with city clerk's department, as well as paralegal in the city attorney's office, Terry Schwab, these three chapters seem to be some low-hanging fruit that are regulations that are not currently enforced by city staff. And I don't think anyone who's currently here was around at the time these were adopted or, at the time these were stopped being enforced, much less at the time they were adopted. So I don't know if anyone here is going to be, going to be able to explain why they were adopted or why they are not enforced today. But these are the, the chapters of our municipal code that require a police department permit to operate a dance hall or a dance academy or a skating rink. And those are chapters 5- And those are chapters five dot twenty, five dot twenty-four, and five dot twenty-eight in the municipal code. The entire Title V of the, of the municipal code, uh, seems to be an area that is rife with chapters and regulations that are not currently enforced today or are unnecessary and out of date, so we will be bringing back more of these pursuant to the city council request. But, um, these were ones that stood out to myself. I inquired with the city clerk. She indicated that these are not enforced. I inquired with the police chief, uh, to determine whether he thought that these, uh, chapters were still necessary, and he indicated that he would not have an issue with having these chapters, uh, repealed from a policy basis. So we as staff feel that these chapters could be repealed as a cleanup item of the code if the council wishes. The only concern that was voiced by some members of city staff was that the regulations on dance, uh, public dances and dance halls include cabarets. So there was a question about whether adult-type dance businesses or uses would be, the regulations on those would be repealed by repealing this, and that is not the case. There's a separate chapter of the, the municipal code, chapter five dot four zero, which has a number of more up-to-date regulations on not only, um, these types of, uh, dance establishments, but also all adult-type businesses. So, um, just to state it as part of the staff report, the types of businesses that are being regulated by these chapters are, uh, cabarets, dances for minors, and dance halls and public dances, as well as dance academies and skating rinks. So I wanted to just go through what the definition really quick of these uses are. So cabaret is any place where the public is admitted and where entertainment, including singing, dancing, and vaudeville, is provided and where alcoholic beverages are sold. Dances for minors is a public dance conducted exclusively for persons between the ages of thirteen and twenty-one and, uh, to which only such persons are admitted as participants. A dance hall is a place where the holding or conducting of a public dance is carried on. So our code currently requires a police department permit to hold any of those events, and it also has certain regulations on those events that are in the code, such as, uh, time regulations. So it prohibits dancing after one AM if it's a dance for minors, and it prohibits dancing after one forty-five AM for any other type of public dance. And it requires a minimum of two hundred square feet of floor space. For dancing academies, those are, uh, any dancing, any dancing academy studio or other place where dancing lessons are offered to the public. So, uh, code currently requires a police department permit for those. The code also, I will note, uh, prohibits any form of alcoholic liquor to be sold or dispensed from those premises as a regulation on those. But I believe that if we repealed that, um, an ABC permit would still be required to sell alcohol or dispense alcohol from those types of businesses. Uh, and then lastly, is a skating rink. I don't think I need to define that one, but it is a roller or ice rink, and, uh, there's also a time regulation on those, that no skating rink shall be operated between the hours of one AM and nine AM. So again, um, these are chapters of the code that we brought back pursuant to the council request as code sections that may be unnecessary, outdated, or unenforced, and, uh, we offer these up if the council would like to do a code cleanup to repeal these sections of the code. And I'm available for questions.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Thanks, Jeff. When was the last time you were at an adult cabaret?
I, uh, I can't remember.
I don't think anybody can remember an adult cabaret here. I, I mean, I think I, before I vote, I should go review some of this, you know? But, um, why are we worried as a city about an adult cabaret? Let's get real, why don't we just clean the whole thing up?
Councilmember Ball.
So this is, uh, just fascinating for me. It shows you where, uh, it's kind of a point in time where our city was and what they were thinking fifty-plus years ago. Uh, no offense to the police chief, but I would love to not have to go get permission to go dancing. Uh, that's something I really like to do. I'm a big dancer, so, um, I think that we should clean this up for sure, and I'm not sure if you're a dancer, or maybe you're in the vaudeville, I'm, I don't know, but, uh, I just wanted to say thank you.
How many attorneys are?
I just wanted to say thank you, though, for, for giving us the opportunity to, to actually remove some regulation. I think that's a great thing. Thank you.
And Councilmember Cordova.
So I actually read this and researched this, um, and city attorney, so can you, other than the cabaret, um, because we know that the cabaret, uh, issue is, is also covered in the five point four zero dot zero four zero part of the Lompoc Municipal Code, along with other adult, uh, entertainment, dancing type of, uh, locations that could potentially open up in the city of Lompoc. Um, but I'm most concerned, um, with the removal of some of these, and I did look at them, but once we're talking about public dances or dance halls and we're, and I went through them, um, a lot of them are dealing with, uh, children, so by removing this, um, is it fair to say that we would be then removing the restrictions, um, or the, I guess, regulations that come with a location that is going to have adult, I mean, um, that is going to have children dancing, um, and the regulations that could go with that for the protection of those minors?
Uh, you would be removing the requirement of a location that had a dance for minors to get a police department permit. You would be removing that. Uh, you'd be removing the regulations that I mentioned, um, about how, you know, the, the hours of dance that are allowed, dance for minors, uh, shall not be permitted after one AM, the minimum of two hundred square feet, uh, the fact that, it, there are some in here that are duplicative of other laws, like there is a rule that says no person shall appear in a state of nudity. Well, if that's going to happen, then that's going to be taken care of by Chapter five dot four zero of the code, so some things like that you don't need to worry about, um, and then...
City Attorney, not specifically pertaining to the children, though. That, the five point four zero is specifically pertaining to adult, uh, businesses that have these type of activities.
If there were a dance for minor, if there were a dance for minors where someone were to appear in a state of nudity, that would be covered by the adult business regulation. And the other, uh, regulation that specifically deals with da, with, um, dances for minors is that there must be a person over the age of twenty-one years present, and that no person under the age of thirteen years shall be admitted to a dance for minors. Uh, no alcoholic beverages shall be sold or consumed on the premises where there's a dance for minors, but again, I think an ABC permit would be required to have that at the dance for minors anyway.
We'd also be removing, though, the, um, uh, portion of, of where somebody potentially applies for a permit for a, uh, location such as this, where, um, it prevents someone having been convicted of a crime or, or, um, anything associated with prostitution, pimping, pandering, uh, procurement of child, for lewd or lascivious acts, obscene manner, gambling, and so on and so forth. You're removing that from...
That's correct, because a permit wouldn't be required anymore, so there wouldn't be any requirements on who can get a permit.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Councilmember Ball.
So I definitely hear that. Um, I, again, I just go back to the fact that, from your staff report, and correct me if I'm wrong, these are items that are not enforced anymore, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
So when we say enforced, when was the last time we had a, um, public dance hall or a, um, skating rink or the application that actually came through our city?
I do not know the answer to that question, because as far as I know from talking with staff, no one has submitted an application for one of those during the time that anyone here has been here, uh, and we are not actively going out, I know, when staff becomes aware of a dance that is occurring in a, uh, in a dance hall, we're not actively going out and, you know, enforcing and saying they needed to get a permit.
Thank you. Um, I just want to m, make a statement that, um, I think it's a failure to say that because we're not doing it, um, it means it shouldn't exist. Uh, there's a lot of things in our city that we're not doing, and the whole purpose for me requesting for us to go through the Lompoc Municipal Code was because of this. There are codes within our, or, or ordinances within our government that, um, we're not doing and maybe we should be doing. Um, by reviewing this, we are able to have that healthy discussion, but if it's going to become something where just because we say, "Let's get rid of it because we're not using it or because we're not enforcing it," when in reality, the call to action should be like, "Hmm, maybe we should think about this and whether this is something we should be protecting our residents." So I just, I just want to ask the council to really think about this. Um, we haven't had maybe any new applications. That doesn't mean that we don't have dance halls or studios throughout our city that potentially have, uh, children dancing, and the protection of those is very important to me, so I just want to ask the council to really think about this.
Any more questions for staff before we go to public comment? All right, thank you. We will now open the floor for public comment on item number eight. If you would like to call in, the number to call is eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one, eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. Madam Clerk, did we receive any written communication on this item?
No, ma'am. Nothing.
All right. While we wait to see if there's a call to make sure we've given enough time for the public to hear the phone number, um, I will say that as a historian and being someone born and raised in Texas, these laws were often put in place for different societal reasons, whether it was, uh, belief that dancing led to the devil, or that they just didn't like the idea of people getting together and socializing with music, and jazz was a bad thing. There are lots of different reasons that over fifty years ago, society would have overregulated such events, and that now we have the father-daughter dance that happens, and we have the mother-son luell, and all kinds of events that have other permits that are required that oversee these issues.
Goodie, goodie. Oh, do you mind turning off the recording in the background, please? Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No worries. Um, you're live in the council meeting. You have three minutes to give your public comment. You can go ahead.
Uh, yeah, um, just speaking to, uh, municipal codes that we should or should not be enforcing and, um, what's outdated or not, um, I was, uh, wondering about, um, municipal code one seven point one four zero point zero one zero, um, and just have some questions about those and, uh, if things are still in effect. Um, I think it's in regards to the, um, code enforcement, and, um, so, uh, number one, um, is ordinance fifteen eighty-four still in effect where the city is or has the ability to issue an administrative citation if a voluntary compliance is not achieved? Um, number two, who is responsible for issuing these citations? Number three, what does the administrative citation entail or say? Uh, is there an example available, maybe on the city's website? Um, is there a fine associated with the citation? If so, how much? Um, based on the city's criteria of the number of complaints, um, like if it's an immediate public safety hazard, if it's clearly visible from the public right of way? Uh, what is currently the number one priority for the city in regards to, uh, issuing administrative citation? Uh, like is there some sort of list for that, and what is the number one priority right now? Uh, does the city still offer loan programs for, for thought improvement for, uh, local businesses? Um, and number eight, if code enforcement has been essentially defunct since two thousand nine, uh, per the city's website, is there a plan going forward to revisit it in the future? Um, and number nine, are we going to allow an I Thor on one of the most prominent, important corners of the city to remain there for another five, ten, twenty, or thirty years? Um, and I'm talking about the Odd Bell Building on the corner of H and Ocean, uh, that has a, a board, um, as a window right now. It doesn't reflect well on the city, and it should be fixed and repaired. Uh, that's it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else rise and no additional callers, we will close public comment. To the last caller, many of your questions are very valid, but they are not this topic. If you would like to submit your questions via email to the city clerk or one of us, our emails are all on the city website, and we'll be happy to get you more information, but they are a completely separate topic than the very specific one that we have on the agenda, so thank you very much for your call. I will bring it back to council. Councilmember Cordova.
Um, I would ask that the council not remove this, um, as I feel that if it's something that is not hurting anyone, why remove the restrictions that could protect, in my opinion, that would protect any minors or any, uh, children or even teens? Uh, it does state dances for minors as well. I don't think that, um, anything of what, uh, Mayor Osborne, you said, is, is really relevant to any of this. Um, nobody's trying to stop, uh, the city from having the father-daughter dance. Nobody's trying to, um, stick this under religious, uh, uh, you know, over protections or whatever. This is very clear if you read it, and it's intended to protect location, it's intended to protect times, it's intended to protect and, and, and keep, I think, the integrity of these locations, um, as, as pertaining for the minors, so I would ask that the council not remove this, and I would motion that we do not, um, remove this and we, um, we just leave it as is. If we can't, uh, take the time to, to review it and maybe consider if there are any ways of updating it, I would ask that we leave it.
Comment, Councilmember Ball.
I actually have a question for city attorney. There's a section in the, uh, attachment five dot twenty dot one hundred, exemption for private dances of clubs. Can you elaborate on that area? Because it appears that a lot of dances, et cetera, et cetera, could happen, as long as they are not open to the general public, so just maybe clarify on that part for me if you would.
Uh, well, you've, you've explained it. It is true that there's an exception to these rules for any dance conducted by a religious, charitable, civic, school, fraternal, or patriotic organization if they only invite their members and their guests of their members. Um, if the general public is excluded and if alcoholic beverages are not served, so if it's that type of dance, uh, then these regulations would not apply anyway.
So I just want to point it out, and again, I have no argument on this. I, I, again, we haven't enforced this, this hasn't really mattered. I, I completely understand where Councilwoman Cordova's coming from. It just, this thing kind of sticks out to me, to her point, that, um, there is quite a few loopholes, that as long as you have a private... loopholes that as long as you have a private event, whether children are there or not, there is a way to, to have this and not quote unquote, protect the people attending because of that exemption. So I just wanted to point that out as well.
Uh, I have to note, council, I think Councilmember Cordova made a motion, so we need to see if there's a second to that motion.
Can I say something? Councilmember Cordova.
Would you be open to putting a second on that if we remove that? Because I think that's a great point that you bring up. Why have the exemptions to these groups when the regulations are there to protect all? So I don't know. That's something that can be considered if someone wants to put a second on that.
So you have amended your motion to remove that section, 100. Okay. Councilmember Ball?
So I, I hear you on that. Uh, I just feel like that's a, how should I say this? Because of these exemptions, if we take all those exemptions away, which was intentionally put there probably years ago, then we're actually increasing the regulatory pressure of these things, meaning no one gets away with anything. Everyone needs to get a permit. Everything needs to be regulated. So again, I, I don't, I can't agree with that just because I think it's increasing the regulation. But I just wanted to point out that some of these things within these rules are not necessarily up to date and accurate. Um, that's just where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Councilmember Cordova.
But you're not pointing out what it is that's not accurate or what it is. If I look at this and I read all of this and considering that police and even in corporate industry, everybody's saying that human trafficking is such a major concern for us in America, I think that these are basic regulations that protect anyone coming in and opening up a dance hall or something like that, that protect the activity of minors in those locations. I mean, I, I don't see where there's a problem of overregulating when it's dealing with minors.
So I definitely understand where you're coming from on that. I think my, the only thing that I'll go back to is that, and no one up here is arguing to not protect children in any context, but if this is a whole list of things that I'm being told as a city council person that has not and is not currently being enforced, then what are we talking about? I would agree with you if we should, and again, I, I respect your request to go through the municipal code and clean it up. Perhaps we shouldn't do it so quickly. Perhaps we shouldn't do it as a knee jerk. Perhaps we shouldn't wipe out all of the rules. Maybe we should as a council really take our time and go through all of this very tediously to see what is current and maybe clean it up. I, I, I can't argue with you that by removing everything, are we potentially, potentially opening up a scenario? Perhaps, but all of that is mute to me right now. We have no method and no history of enforcing any of this. So I'm not in full disagreement, but that's where I'm coming from. We can have great intentions, but if we can't enforce something and don't actively do so, then who are we protecting? Maybe we should talk about how do we actually enforce rules and regulations that we have? I think that's fair.
Councilmember Cordova.
And might I remind everybody in this room that that was the purpose of this. It was to go through the Long Pocon Municipal Code and to say that this is a knee jerk reaction is an untrue statement. This was a request that I made a year ago and I was told that this was the lowest hanging fruit that was brought forth because we needed to bring something forward because I requested this over a year ago. So again, I, I asked the council to really consider, so if everything that we bring up, we're not enforcing because of our own lack of enforcement or our inability financially to provide the resources to our departments, divisions, or whatever to, to enforce our own Long Pocon Municipal Code. And if this council majority is always going to choose to say, oh, well, we're not enforcing it, let's get rid of it, that's a major concern because that is the conversation that we should be having. That is why this is here, is, is to bring it to light and say, we're not doing this. Is this something we need to remove or is this something that we need to consider that we need to, to, to do? To me, saying that we need to remove this, I think, is, is huge because that was not my intention when I asked this to come forward, when I asked for a revision of the Long Pocon Municipal Code. So everything, Councilmember Ball, that you're saying is actually opposite of what I asked for and the consideration from the council needs to be serious on this.
Um, this is a question for our city attorney. Jeff, when you said low hanging fruit, it wasn't intended in that it was the easiest thing to bring back. It was more about what could you start addressing and based on reviewing something, you're not looking to just recommend elimination. You will look at each one of them and say, this needs to be updated. It potentially could be eliminated, that it, it wasn't your intent to just present something because it could be eliminated. It was the fact that upon review, this was something that had not been enforced in well over 50 years.
Yes, that's a good summary and it's something that could be potentially dealt with quickly by just repealing. For example, as like on the other hand, there are parts of the code that may very well be due for a quite a modernization or an update, like for example, we have some regulations on taxi cabs. And if we're going to get into updating or revising the regulations on taxi cabs, that is something that's going to require a lot of research and attorney work and we have to take into account Ubers and Lifts these days and it's a lot. This was something that we, I and in consultation with staff thought could, could be, something that could be brought back, um, uh, quickly and for a, rather than a revision, just a repeal because it did seem to be outdated and it's not being enforced.
Okay. Thanks for the clarity on, on, on some of it because I know that using the term low hanging fruit may have been a misstep, but it really was, you want to start addressing things that have been requested and you need to parcel them out and it comes off as low hanging fruit when you look at, at this potentially. So to not make light of this, I think what's important is when you look at the very first section of five 2040 where it goes into very deep detail about all of the things that need to be done and many of these things have to be done when they get a business tax certificate. They have to present this information. Many of the information about locations, if it's a special event, has to be met when you get a temporary use permit as far as times and, and, and noise level and how long are addressed in the use permit. And then some of these things are addressed just in creating that environment. So if somebody does decide to build a dance hall, there are requirements regarding restrooms and lighting and parameters for some of this. So I, I think a lot of this is addressed in many other areas of our code of conduct and planning areas and special permits and, and that sort of thing. So I would say that if there's anything that's not addressed there, that would be worth considering, but so much of this is addressed in other areas of our existing permits and processes. Okay. And the city clerk is nodding her head yes because she sees most of these applications and business tax certificates as they come in. So that's why I keep looking to her because she processes so many of those. Uh, Councilmember Cordova, you still have the floor.
Yeah, so I, I read 5.40 and I'm not seeing on there where it specifically states that there is a protection for minors with regards to the issues that I've brought up. So again, we're deflecting to other things on, on this, which I agree, it is covered. I'm specifically concerned with the removal of any code or municipal ordinance or code that would remove protection for any business or any type of activity that someone would come to hold that would have dances or activities with minors that would not regulate the protection of those minors. It's simple things. Again, if it's not hurting anyone, I would ask that the council, please consider that. This isn't a popularity contest. I realize that if you guys don't like what I say sometimes, I'm asking you to please look beyond that and consider my words and what I'm saying. I read this. There is nowhere else where I am seeing specifically, speaking about section 5.40 where it's covering the protection of minors and those specific regulations that I'm speaking about. That's all I'm saying.
Uh, Jeff, on those two issues where it calls out minors in particular, the 130 and the 140, on the 130, that could be moved to the cabaret, correct? You could move that under the 5.40?
130, cabaret is admission of minors. Unlawful for any person operating cabaret to allow any minor to frequent the cabaret. Um, yes, if, if that's not-
You struck the vaudeville and-
Yes, that can be moved to 5.40 if there's not already a prohibition on adult businesses for minors in 5.40. Searching through right now, 5.40, I couldn't find one, but it would surprise me if there was not a prohibition on minors entering adult businesses already. But yes, that can be moved to 5.40.
Okay. And then the 5.20140 dance for minors? A portion of it, I think, is worth retaining and potentially putting in another location, but I'm not sure what the right location would be if we're eliminating this particular area. It's mostly the, the fact that no person under age of 13 years or over the age of 21 shall be admitted is a little, it's a little difficult since we do things like mother-son events and father-daughter just as a city. It would, it would cause our own issues because we do allow under five and, and that sort of thing at those events. So I think that would need to be a little reworked with the no alcoholic beverage sold or consumed. I think that portion, if you could identify another location to put it that goes along with, I'm, I'm not sure off the top of my head, having not gone through Municipal Code, but I, I'm sure there's another area that could talk about events and regarding minors and alcohol consumption potentially?
Yes. You're basically getting towards the idea of having a section of the code that talks about dances for minors and we have these protections there, but then we can repeal all the rest.
Right, right. I was looking for, what's a solution to protect the minors? And if you could bring that back, we could repeal the rest of it. I think that would be my motion is to pull anything that obviously is something that the police don't feel the need to oversee anymore and staff doesn't see, but to make sure that minors are protected at these sorts of events and if there's a better section to add it to or create its own section under this area, I think that might address the concerns. And we would leave it to you to go through and, and work through what those minors, what those issues regarding minors are within all of these and concise it to something to bring back to us. Okay?
Understood.
Is that understood enough? I know it's a little rambling. Yes, city clerk?
So the, the title says repeal chapters 5.20, 5.24, and 5.28. So are we talking about repealing none of those, all of those, and just bring something back?
I would say repeal all of those and return with something regarding minors as it, as a, because it would end up being a new code number or-
So your motion would include to repeal 5.20, 5.24, and 5.28 in the entirety?
In the entirety and return with a code section for minors. Better clarity?
I understand that, but I do not recommend that. I recommend that you, I recommend that you leave it as is right now tonight.
Okay.
And then I can bring back an ordinance that would address the minors like you're asking for and the ordinance would also repeal all the rest.
Okay.
All at the same time, rather than repealing them tonight and then adopting a new order.
All right. I will take legal's advice and make that my motion. All right. Councilmember Starbuck?
Well, it appears to me if I was going to have a dance, I'd go rent from the county at the vets hall at this point, but I'll give you a second on that.
Thank you. Any other questions or clarifications? Councilmember Cordova?
Um, thank you, city attorney, for doing that because when I asked the question and I understand, you know, I, I don't, I don't care who's the hero, but when I asked the question, I was told that it would be costly for us to go back and bring back an alternative. And so I, I find it very disrespectful that I do my homework and I want to do what's right for this community. I'm told that it's too costly for me to do the right thing, but then Mayor Osborne pretty much bulldozes my request for us and my call for us to really consider what we're doing here, but then our city attorney agrees to that. I thank you for agreeing to that.
You're welcome. Uh, I just want to clarify that I was trying to get across the point that if we were to undertake, if, if every single one of these came to a council direction that resulted in directing the staff to do revisions and updates to the code, that would turn into a zoning code update, just like, I mean, that would turn into a municipal code update, just like we did the zoning code update a few years ago, if we were to, you know, piece by piece, go through every part of the municipal code. That would be very costly and that would take a lot of time and be time consuming. So I wanted to impart that and attempt to avoid every section of the municipal code being updated. Doing this one section to kind of break the stalemate here is, I think, the best way to proceed.
All right. I appreciate that and I do believe that it is council direction. So again, just trying to negotiate solutions as part of making sure that we address all concerns and hope that we can continue to have these sort of conversations and appreciate Councilwoman Cordova's clarification of her original request so that we all better understand it. We have a motion on the floor and a second. If there are no further questions, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. Unfinished business. So at the last meeting, Gabe Garcia, our human resource manager, brought forward the adoption of ordinance number 168722, authorizing an amendment to the California Public Employees' Retirement System contract implement cost sharing with, which we'll repeal, ordinance number 167620. And because we can't do this on consent calendar, we have to do it here and so it's basically second reading. Is that correct?
Mayor Osborne, you, you are absolutely correct. So there, there is no discussion. We did the first reading, the last meeting, and this is a pro forma for, to satisfy CalPERS requirements.
All right. Any questions from council? All right, seeing none, we'll open the floor for public comment. If you want to comment on this, the number to call is 805-875-8201. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communications on this item?
Nothing.
All right. And while we take up that lovely time needed to make sure that no one from the public calls, this is normally something, and the first time we did, we did put it on consent calendar and then we got told by CalPERS that that was inappropriate by their standards and we needed to do this. And so normally this would appear on consent calendar and we would conduct a second reading via that just to better educate the community on what consent calendar historically is. It's either items that are typical that just need to be done and if we want to have discussion, we can, or it's second readings and we need to make sure that the 30 days have passed for comments to be received. Since we had already done this once, we are able to do this at back-to-back meetings and seeing no one call and no one rise in the room, I think I have filled 30 seconds and we'll close public comment and bring it back to council and entertain a motion. Who wants to go home? Give me a motion.
I'll give you a motion.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Ball.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Vega. So Vega moved, Ball seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Garcia, for walking us through that. All right. Final written communications of any sort?
Nothing ma'am.
Thank you. And here's your chance for final oral communications. This go-round is two minutes maximum. You may call 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. If you're in the room and have stuck with us on this exciting evening, you're welcome to come to the microphone and speak. to come to the microphone and speak. All right. Seeing no one rise and the phones not ring, we will close oral communications and bring it back to council comments, meeting reports. Councilmember Vega.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Cordova?
Nothing.
Councilmember Ball?
So, just a couple of quick things. Just, a few people in the community have been discussing why they can't use the playground at Thompson Park, and I thought maybe if you could take a second, someone could take a minute to just update us, edify us on what's happening there, why it's that way, and what the plan is to reopen that for that neighborhood.
Well, if I'm the one updating, it's going to be a little rough, but I know that we have some outdated equipment there, but we are working on funding and replacing that equipment, so it's coming soon.
Great, thank you. And the last thing I just wanted to say is I have a tremendous amount of respect for Councilwoman Cordova, and she did bring up something, and we may not agree on everything, but something that does matter to me is, and I've learned more about it at the local level, is human trafficking, and she did bring that up and mention that. And I do, I do look forward to, hopefully in the next few months, having a serious discussion about this issue, about public safety, and what we as a council can do to invest within our city services and our resources to make an impact on that issue and many, many others. So, again, I just, I really appreciate her thoughtfulness on this, and I look forward to having this discussion down the road.
Councilmember Starbuck?
No reports.
Thank you. I attended the NCPA State Capitol Day meetings and the Santa Barbara County's Library Ad-hoc meeting. CalCities, which was formerly known as League of California Cities, I am on the Transportation, Communication, and Public Works Committee, and we had our quarterly meeting. I also participated in the SB CAG broadband ad-hoc meeting and the Santa Barbara County COVID-19 Legislative Briefing, as well as attended the LAFCO meeting, the local area for annexation. I can't remember what the acronym stands for, but it basically controls annexation decisions in the county. I also attended the Econ Alliance Ag Forum this year, and recently, the Olivares Ribbon Cutting, and congratulations to that handing off the business to the next generation in the Olivares family. Couple of things going on. So, the Point in Time Count is next week on Wednesday at 5:30 a.m. The last online training for that is tomorrow at 6 p.m. And if you want to sign up, it's countyofsb punto pointintime dot info forward slash. The library's Grossman Gallery is calling for artists. If you would like to have your art exhibited at the library over the next year, as well as the Vandenberg Village Library, there will be a review of those submitted on the 24th. So, have six pieces that are mounted and ready to go at the library between 2:30 and 3:00 p.m. And be prepared to pick them back up at 4:45. Art Advisory Committee for the Grossman Gallery will be reviewing, so it is a great way to get exposure. Community Partners in Caring is looking for drivers to assist with their Miles for Smiles and their seniors in the community. There'll be an info session on the 25th up at Heritage Oaks Villa in 300 Burton Mesa from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. You can also call 805-925-0125 or email volunteer@partnersincaring.org. It's really important that we take the time to contribute locally. That's the resource for our local needs, and we need more drivers. The Teen Leadership Conference, put on by our rec. department and the youth commission, is March 25th. It's for 7th to 12th graders, and it's at the Dewey Center from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on that Friday, and it's $15 per student. If you'd like to register, you can go to our city website and follow the link, or call And last but not least, the Longpoke Valley Chamber of Commerce Restaurant Week is all next week from the 21st through the 27th. Meals from the participating restaurants is only $20.22. So, if there's restaurants out there that are on the list that you'd like to try, it's a great time to do. You can go to longpoke.com and take a look at who's participating and who their menus are. So, get out and support our local businesses. It's really important to discover and support those that you may not know that are in our community, and I look forward to seeing you out, because I got my list. I'm going to try and hit one every evening. So, with that, we will adjourn to, oh, don't forget, tomorrow night. Last redistricting meeting starts at 6:30 p.m. here in the same chamber, same bat channel, same bat time. We will see you tomorrow night if you're interested in redistricting. Otherwise, we will adjourn our Longpoke City Council meeting to the next regular meeting at 6:30 p.m. on March 1st, 2022.